2021 at 5:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers in Cluston, Florida. In attendance are for the Hendry County Commissioners Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Raymond Iglesias, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Jennifer Davis, County Attorney Mark Lapp, Clerk Kimberly Barone. In attendance for the Hendry County School Board are School Superintendent Michael Swindle, Chairperson Stephanie Bucen, Vice Chair Amanda Nelson, Dwayne Brown, Paul Samerdyk, John Basquin.
Thank you ma'am. First off, School Board, thank y'all for taking the extra night to come out on a meeting. We appreciate it. Hopefully we can get this done quick and painless. Everybody won't have to stress real hard. So, Mr. Lapp, if you would, get it started, please, sir.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, this is the process we do every 10 years after the census. So, the census was completed, you know, was done last year and we didn't get the data till August, but we got the data in August and applied the new data with the census tracts and put it on the maps of, or the map of the county to see what it did as far as the population in the various districts. So, as a first cut, just so you know, we tried it, was we went with the existing boundaries that you already are living under and just put the exist, the new population on top of that and just, just for kicks, you know, so what it did. And so, that, that showed that we did, it did not work. You have to have a general plus or minus 10% from your biggest to your smallest district. And District Five, District Five for the County Commission, and, and I don't know, does the School Board, do you follow that same numbering?
Yes.
Okay. So, District Five, Commissioner Turner and School Board Basquin's district was substantially under what it needed to be, you know, and you know, and you can speculate about reasons for that, you know, the growth in other areas that they didn't experience as much of, but also the state prison was counted back 10 years ago that was in District Five and that closed and that had about 1,000 inmates and that's 1,000 people that aren't in your district. That's huge for when you're talking about 7,000 people per district, take or minus a few. So, that made your District Five way too small. So, we had to grow District Five so that you couldn't just stick with your existing boundaries. And so, we did that, and I say "we," I mean, it was primarily, is Ms. Hoots here? Yeah, she is here. Good, good, she's here. So, it was...
She's in the frying pan.
Well, she was involved and I want to make clear that she, she was. So, Ms. Hoots and I were the main ones, you might say, who were like saying, "Let's move that line, let's move this line." And then we had our GIS staff person for the county, Stephen McCormick, I'm going to give him a lot of credit because he did, he works wonders with the technology on this. So, he worked with us to produce maps. And so, we just tried different options. We said, "What about we move that boundary here, move that boundary there, how many people are in that census block?" You had to do a lot of trial and error to try to figure out where you're at. So, all of your boundaries had to be based on census blocks. So, we can't just draw a line because we think it's a nice line. We have to follow census blocks. And so, the Census Bureau created blocks and so, on the map, it's up on the screen and then also you have, you know, in front of you... Those are, those are census, the little gray, the gray background lines, if you will. Gray lines, they might be, not the road lines, but the little gray lines. Those are census blocks. And so, we have to work with census blocks. And so, a census block is all in one district or it's not. You can't split a census block. So, that's a limiting factor. A lot of times they follow really good logical boundaries like roads, canals, et cetera. Other times, they're kind of just weird, you know, they really, they, they split up communities with their census blocks in a strange way. And so, we couldn't, we had to work around that. So, as far as changes, like I said, we needed to grow District Five. So, District Five, if you look at the map of what we got, you know, this is where we're landing, so it's not what we've got now. But if you envision what District Five has now, District Five has Hookers Point, about 10% or so of Montura, give or take a percent, you know, a little bit, all of Pioneer, and then the whole South County, you know, that's, that's District Five. And so, you got to grow it somewhere. So, where are you going to grow it? Well, you, you can't grow it into Harlem, you know, you shouldn't grow it into Harlem. You know, Harlem's its own community and they got their commissioner and they need to have, you know, their boundaries and their boundaries had to grow a little bit. So, you couldn't take away and grow District Five into Harlem. So, US 27 is a nice dividing line. You could grow District Five north of 27, but you might say that that's crossing a line that's a very logical clean line, you know, so we didn't do that. Then you've got, you've already got all Pioneer in District Five. You've got on the west side, it runs along that railroad right away that goes, you know, near Felda, east of Felda, and that's the line. But you go west of that and you're in, you're into Felda. And then you're into, you're splitting up the Felda community, which is a small community as it is, but do you really want to split that into two districts? And you got Board Member Nelson there, so you can't take her out of her district and put that into Five. So, that was a limiting factor for us. Growing into Port La Belle, you know, that wasn't a real logical option to us because Port La Belle already is split between two districts. Do you want to split it between three now? It just didn't, we didn't think that made sense. So, that leaves Montura as the only place to work with. So, we went ahead and did that and we just went from working from the south and from the east and going up, going north and west until, and working with the census block, add that block, add that block and see what you got and we made it a straight line. And as you can see, that's what we landed with, with basically one-third more or less of Montura being in Four and then the rest of it being in Five. As far as landmarks that people might be familiar with, the clubhouse would remain in Four. The fire station ended up in Five, right? We did, so the fire station ended up in Five, just to get people, but it's just, just inside Five. You know, they're both each barely inside their boundaries, but the clubhouse just is within Four and the fire station's just within Five. And so, that's the main changes to District Five. And then, District One, that we, it's already, you know, Harlem and the southern part of the city limits of Cluston. We just had to grow it a little bit to get the population up a little bit. We added three census blocks to the, just across the industrial canal, to Stanton Road. There's three census blocks there, like 300 people, and added that. Otherwise, District One was pretty much intact from what it was before. District Three, the blue, was, was pretty, the largest district and we had to shrink it a little, you know, the growth, you know, a lot of the growth was there. And so, we had to find a way to shrink it a little bit. And so, north of the river, we stuck with the existing lines. County Route 78 is the dividing line between Three and Two right now, and we kept that up to Fort Denno Bridge. And that, that's how it is now and that's how it stayed. And then, so the changes between Two and Three were, were just west of the city limits of La Belle, if you, if you know, like know where Captain Hendry, Live Oak, the, the park and Big Pine, you know, getting near Walmart there, all north of 80, that those territories were in Three, we moved those over to Two, over to Huggetts, Huggetts Road, if you're familiar with Huggetts Road, which is directly across the street from Walmart. So, we're still working north of 80 and going up to Fort Denno Road, that east of Huggetts went into Two, the rest of that stayed in Three. And then, then the other changes were between District Two and District Four in Port La Belle. So, most of the geographic, most of the extent of Port La Belle already is in District Four, but it needed to, because Four lost so many numbers in Montura, Four had to grow. So, we had to take Four into District Two in Port La Belle further. And so, if you're familiar with the units of Port La Belle, Port La Belle units One and Two, Port La Belle One is where Country Oaks Elementary is, and then Port La Belle Unit Two is due south of that, south of Cowboy, directly south. That's, those two were in District Two and we moved those over to District Four. So, District Four has all of Port La Belle with three exceptions that are remaining in Two. That is Laurel Oaks, if you're familiar with that, the subdivision north of 80, near the, well, north of 80, where the, near where the golf course used to be. Oak Haven remains in Two. And the northern part of Euclid Village is already in Two and it stayed in Two. So, Euclid Village is split and it stayed split. And so, those are the changes. You can see the demographics of the populations, you know, at the top of the table, you know, the total headcount, racial breakdown, et cetera. And so, that's what we're presenting to you. So, this is a public hearing for you to talk to each other, you know, School Board, County Commission, to express your thoughts on this. And then, and also to hear from the public. And then, we're going to do the same thing in La Belle for the La Belle folks to hear this. And so, that will be on December 7th at the School Board's regular meeting, first item of business, I think you meet at 5:30, so it'd be December 7th, 5:30 in La Belle, same kind of deal, deal that we're doing right now. And then, and then you, the School Board, would, I guess you're continuing into your regular meeting later that evening. And so, you would go ahead and vote that evening on the map and in your regular meeting, not in the joint hearing. And then, on December 14th, our Board is having its regular December meeting. And so, our Board would vote on the maps, the map at that time. And we all have to have it all done by the end of the year, and so, we're on track to do that because you're going to only change boundaries in an odd numbered year. So, that's the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, my question, just District Four, that's you, Ms. Bucen, and you, Commissioner Iglesias, right?
Yep.
What's the total volume of population increase that they pick up by taking a larger percentage of sensor blocks, census blocks in Port La Belle specific?
I don't think I'm going to answer that on the, with...
Do either of you know?
No.
No?
I just know that, you know, we had a, what we, what we were doing in the process we were going through was that the, the average population, if you take the whole population of Hendry County divided by Five, means your target population per district is 7,924. And so, that's what we were working with. I mean, obviously, we're, we didn't nail that, we were above and below that because you can't exactly nail it. But, so when we were adding and deleting census blocks, we weren't really adding, we weren't keeping track of everything we were doing, we were just saying when we got to the final number that was good. And so, I can't answer that, but we could answer that question by going back to the maps later.
Does a census block does not have a set number to it, it has a geographical boundary to it?
Correct, correct. And some census blocks, a lot of them have zero, you know, people and they can have...
Yeah, especially in our district.
And they can have hundreds of people in them.
Mark, I'll have other questions, but my final question for this round is, they, they have to be within, or we're going to, we have to strive to be within 10% of the highest population and the lowest population as we accumulate all the numbers.
That's a general rule of thumb. It's not like a law that if you're at 10.5% within, your whole plan is illegal, but it's a, it's a target because you are required by state law, you are required to have districts as nearly equal in population as practicable, is what it says. Nearly equal is practicable. So, obviously, you're not going to be totally equal, but you got to be close to equal and 10% is kind of a rule of thumb. If you have a good reason, you can deviate, but generally, you want to be within that.
What else, you may, anyway, I'm satisfied with my district. It's really a good one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. I was satisfied, you're welcome. I didn't get anything, I got it all taken away.
Bet you're satisfied.
I'm satisfied.
Mr. Samerdyk should be happy.
I'm happy too. Looked good to me, my district, just Two.
Mr. Chair, my question for you, Mr. Lapp, is in, in District Four, that is the, you know, of course, like the only district that encompasses major areas within the eastern part of the county as well as on the western side. Can you tell me how that the population, because, you know, I always say it's like my east side of my, my district and then my west side, can you tell me the difference in population?
I could get that, I don't have that off the hand, but you're basically saying the, what would be your dividing line for...
I would say...
Usually Pioneer.
Yeah, Pioneer.
So, east of Pioneer, the portion that's east of Pioneer versus the portion that's west, that's a number we can get for you and provide, you know, I can send it via email to you.
That would be perfect, thank you.
You want Pioneer to the west or Pioneer to the east?
Pioneer East and then Pioneer West.
Just the population.
Just the population within District Four.
And I guess the only thing I would, I would add is, I would love to know from both of you all, you know, I was scared that I was going to lose a, a portion of Pioneer. I'm glad that I'm not. But I also know that, you know, communities mean a lot to people. I, I hate that I'm losing a portion of Hookers Point. I used to ride my bicycle around a lot as a kid, but that's okay. Change is inevitable. But to the, to the Commissioners that have been representing Montura for a long time, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to ask, you know, do y'all want to test the concept of being in the 10% rule? Mark, what happens if you're at 15%? Because you pick up a census block that, you know, we're, we're finally starting to see some densely populated areas outside of a couple different boroughs. You know, do we get our wrist slapped? Do we get yelled at real harshly, but nothing happens? I mean, what happens exactly?
Yeah, so, you're, you're subject to, the ultimate remedy is you're subject to a lawsuit from somebody who says that you're not complying with the state law, which says that districts have to be near, is nearly equal in population as practicable. That's the standard. And so, you'd be sued for, for violating that standard. The, the, I can just tell you that, you know, they, we had a, I'm flipping to our PowerPoint that was presented at the Florida State Station of County Attorneys when, and they had like a person who's an expert on redistricting who talked to us about that. And so, his statement about this 10% standard was, "Examples of possible exceptions to the 10%, excuse me, 10% rule with well-documented record and in concert with other criteria," and he gave two examples where you could deviate from 10%, "to create a minority influence or majority district or to under-populate a high-growth area of the county." So, you could take, you know, we understand what the minority district is, so if we're not, what you'd be doing in Montura wouldn't be to really make a minority district or not make a minority district, so that's not your, your point. So...
But I, but I do think to the second point, that's our two highest-growth areas. And so, that's where I want to, I want to roll back to you all, and Mark, please interject, you know, if you disagree with this, but Port La Belle's clearly been our, our number one growth, you know, occurring. And then, number two is Montura. And so, I just, I want to hear from you all because I really think that we're affecting you the most, and I think that we could tweak that a little bit more to, to reduce the population because growth has occurred so rapidly that we could actually take some from those Commissioners and give it to elsewhere and make their population would be lower, wouldn't it?
But under your idea, would Montura be all Five?
No, sir, no, sir. Under mine, you would give, you would give a portion back of Montura to Four and take a portion of Port La Belle away from Four to, to make up for the population difference and then give it back to either, it would be Two, I think.
Okay, so, so if you gave more of Two to, more of Port La Belle to Two, Two would likely grow with Port La Belle growing and so, even if, so let's say Two was, but you'd be adding territory to Two, so Two's number would get high, you wouldn't be under-populating Two, you'd be growing Two.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, what, what would be the low district under your scenario?
The low district, under mine, it would still be Five and One.
Okay, so, and so, we're going to leave Five, One basically alone, my opinion.
Five, Five would actually lose a little bit of population.
But where would you grow? If you're, if you're giving up Montura?
No, no, not giving up, I'm talking about giving up like one or two streets again so that the, I'm just trying to get to, you know, for example, I had 100% of Hookers Point, now I have 98% of Hookers Point. Commissioner Iglesias, you're not saying anything, so maybe, maybe this doesn't resonate with you, but I'd love to hear. I just, I enjoy representing people. You get to know people, you, you know, you get to build a relationship with them, they chew on you, you, you go back and you visit with them and you, you try to understand those communities. There's little nuances to each thing. If you threw me into Felda right now, I think I'd get chewed up like a lion pit wearing pork chop drawers. I think that would happen to me right now in Felda because they don't know me, I'm a stranger danger from Hookers Point and I'm from Cluston. So, that's like seven different whammies, right? And my twang is a little different than Felda, okay? So, I'm just saying, if you, if you did that, you know, you affect things. But, but Montura, you know, that's, that's my people, they ain't much different than Hookers Point and I'm, I'm good with it, I just want to know what y'all think, you know?
So, I know you guys had a discussion before about taking all of Montura. My thought was, because Montura is a challenging area because of Central County Water Control District, most of my calls come from that area. So, I would like to see them have two representatives for Montura.
I think it's strong.
That's the reason why I like that.
I like it, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure you're representing more of the people that you've been representing. That's what I'm talking about. And I'm, and I'm growing a little bit more, but I'm not taking 66%, I'm maybe taking 50/50 or 30/30, you know what I mean? I mean, right now, I think I'm at 60% plus of Montura. Do you disagree?
Geographic wise?
Yes, sir.
You'd be about 60.
Yes, sir. Population, I understand, as development goes, it's going to even up the numbers even greater. And so, that's why I'm saying, if we just tweaked a little bit of that off and shaved it off, Ms. Bucen, you know what I mean? I, I think it keeps, I think it keeps the strength where it is. Just, just banter, you know, I'm not trying to belay the, the progress that's here, but... And then, I think you would shrink your Port La Belle, I don't mean to say representation, but you create that, that second district that keeps the strength of Port La Belle, you keep the power once again, and I don't mean that from a standpoint of we have power, I mean it from the power of the voters to say, "We're voicing our opinion across the spectrum of the county," and that's, that's influential, you know? Just, and I, I hate to, I hate, Mark, to say, you know, is it one or two census blocks that are highly populated? What does a highly populated census block look like in, in Hendry County? Will, will we have one that has?
Well, I didn't, you know, like look, look for that.
Let's use Harlem as an example.
I can tell you that, well, I don't know.
Is it four census blocks or one or five, you know?
I guess we have to zero in on the map. I don't know if you can tell, it's the gray lines, but...
The gray lines?
The little gray lines in the background.
There's gray lines?
I see a lot of gray lines.
Are there gray lines in the background?
I don't think so, boss, I think those are...
Those are streets.
You're talking about the streets and...
I'm getting the detail map up on that one.
Mark sees an entirely different spectrum than we see.
He's been working on it for months. We need Steve here.
I'm liking the cars.
Listen, I think you're on point.
See there? He's the chairman, man, he knows.
How dare you. Get this little area out.
Glad I wasn't the only one that didn't see the gray lines, I was concerned. Saw the streets and I'm thinking, Lord Jesus, where are the gray lines?
There's a lot of census blocks up there.
We can pray for me because I can't see the gray lines.
They're not, they're not obvious to me here, I'm sorry. I have to, we have to look into that.
All right.
But a census block could, I can tell you that, I mean, just a few that we were checking for other reasons, not to see how many people were there, but I can tell, I wrote down a few and, you know, I'm looking at one of the ones in Hookers Point had 169 people in it, I mean, just as an example.
I think that's the one that we forfeited to, Ms. Byrd.
That was one, no, it was near there, but we ended up not.
Okay.
But it can have a couple hundred people for a density.
Yes, sir.
I would think Harlem probably has some census blocks with a couple hundred, I think.
And I think that that would be, I think that would be about as high of a density, you know, place, area. So, I guess there's, there's a situation where we could have a census block that has 169 to 200 people in Port La Belle. I think you move a couple of those back into District Two and then give District Four... I, I, I hope it doesn't offend y'all, I mean...
Did you draw that line?
Raymond and Stephanie, give them another street or two of Montura and that's, that's maybe not going to take any people from me.
Would you draw the line all the way across and then just make it, you know, make it square, you know?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, Mark?
Does that make sense?
It seems like it makes sense to make it a good square.
Yes, sir.
Because Raymond comes from Cluston all the way into Port La Belle and stops, okay, and then I pick up and go that way. So, he should keep what he's got.
Yeah, he's scared to death that somebody's going to be representing in La Belle from Cluston, is what he just said in code.
Well, they're not talking about growing.
He's talking about giving more back.
He's not talking about growing, he's talking about giving you back more.
I'm satisfied with what I got.
Well, okay.
But we would give some back, but would you be okay? We're not giving you anything back, is that right? We're giving it just...
Take it away from me, because that's the way it is. It's been five years of working with these folks, but that's all right.
Exactly.
Now, I got to work with them.
So, I guess, I guess, Mark, let me, let me propose this and y'all tell me, what if we just took Raymond's, Raymond's and Stephanie's district and just went straight down with a couple streets, either sou- southerly or easterly as it relates to Montura, and then look at those census blocks and then reduce it accordingly in the Port La Belle volume?
Okay, but, okay, I can see where that would get District Four to be okay because it would be growing in Montura and shrinking in Port La Belle and District Two could handle growing a little bit from where it's at and still be okay. But I'm afraid of what it's going to do to District Five.
It's going to make our population so low.
It's going to make you too small.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're, you're already at...
That's why I say, that's why I say, Mr. Lapp, you go to the least populated census blocks, but give you the biggest geographic area.
Got to stay, well...
On there.
We got to stay contiguous, so we can't just hop around to...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying as they, you know, if, if it's this way, the higher population, or this way, higher population, you tweak it that way, Ms. Hoots. Mr. Lapp, y'all tweak it that way.
Now, one thing that might, that would probably do if we made that change is because the fire station, Montura Fire Station is barely, under the new line, is barely within Five. And, and I, we were kind of doing that partially to have it as an option for a polling place. And if you end up moving the fire station into Four, or keeping it in Four where it's at now, but taking it out as an option, it wouldn't be a polling station option for District Five anymore like we made it to be.
There's nothing else suitable out there.
So, it's nice to have...
The clubhouse is for Four is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And then, Montura would have to drive all the way to Flag Hole?
They already drive to John Boy Auditorium. The ones they do already add in that district, they already drive to...
That's right.
But only...
Yeah, so...
But only 10...
No, we don't go, yeah, we go all the way to town.
Yeah, I'm, okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a problem.
I'm just saying, 90% of people, Montura right now is in District Four.
Yes, sir.
And they get to go to the clubhouse.
Yes, sir.
And the 10% that's not in District Four, they have to go to Cluston now.
And Flag Hole has to go to Cluston.
Right. And so, under our new map, the Montura people would either have the, if she chooses to make a polling place at the fire station, would be able to have both of their polling stations in Montura and have, be close to home to vote.
Commissioner Harris isn't going to allow for that.
Well, Brenda...
No, he despises spending money on polling places. He's told us that multiple times. He said that from A1.
But Brenda, you don't see any problem with having an additional polling place in Montura?
It's a concern. I haven't made a final decision.
Well, you got to make that decision, I mean, they got to have it, they don't need to drive to Cluston.
Mr. Iglesias, are you saying, you, I think what you're saying, if I'm hearing this correctly, is that the potential of manning another polling place is, is a concern? Okay, okay.
Finding the people to manage, because it is a really long day. They have to do a floral training, plus be there at 6:00 in the morning.
I think with what, I think with what we've seen with the trends of early voting and how successful that's been, I think...
You still have to open the polls.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, that's, you know, that's a, that's a heck of a resource that we haven't had forever.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am?
It is, it's fair. But there's those people that want to vote on Election Day.
Now, let me ask you this, though. If we took and had, uh, the fire station as a polling place, if we changed that, have you talked to one of the churches in Flag Hole? If you moved the fire station back out of District? To, if you put it in District Four, whoever you were gonna put there? We have two churches in Flag Hole that you could possibly use. Used to be at one point, yeah.
I have. Yeah, I have too. I remember when Hooker's Point used to be a, you know, grab pole would snap if you wanted to go to town twice a day. And now, you know, everybody, you'd just run out of town. It's not a thing. Yes, ma'am. The point I'm making is, is that a trip to town isn't the strenuous factor that it used to be. Yeah. And then with early voting, it, it changes dynamics tremendously.
Fuel cost is getting that way, though.
Yeah, there's another thing. I mean, I just, we used to put these polling, we set them all up. Maintenance did. We set them all up. There was like 16, I think, right? At one point? And, and to shrink them down made a lot of sense. But in some of these districts, folks are having to stand in line. They all work, they have jobs. And for them to vote is just very, you know, it's very strenuous for them to actually get there and be able to vote before work or after work or on lunch break. Okay, I'll meet with the Bell Civic Center this year.
Wasn't that way the first two times we had early voting. But I think people that, embraced it. Yes, ma'am.
What percent of absentees?
It's a lot of work, but I will say this. I mean, the reservation, it takes us an hour and a half to drive down there to drop off the equipment. They open one box and there may be 20 people that vote.
The most we've ever had was 100.
So I mean, but we're making, we're making it accessible. So, you know, for folks of Flag Hole and Montura, I think we need, need to try to make a, a little bit of a situation for them too. I mean.
But I think, I think.
That's three hours of a ride.
The way it's been is the volume, the volume of Montura residents have been able to vote at the clubhouse.
Well, that, yeah, correct. But they were trying to add a place back to where Turning Point was always a place.
Yeah.
But I just, they, they opened one box.
Yeah.
The signs don't get unwrapped. I picked them up myself for 18 years. When it was a voting cycle, I was the lucky guy that rode around and done that. It was frustrating as heck to get there and nothing was used.
Yeah.
It was three hours round trip.
Mr. Chair, I then, then, um, I, I, you know, think, um, we're 36 minutes into the chit chat. Um, I would propose, do we need to, Mark, is this a concept of making a motion, taking action tonight?
No, no, there's no votes because you're really not in a separate meeting. You're in a joint public hearing. This, this is just to talk. And so I'll take any direction you've got. You also do need to hear from the public before you're done. But the, the last thing I want to say about your, your proposal that you're making is that the, the smallest district right now is, is one, was 7552. And it, they're just barely within the limit of being acceptable under that 10% with, with District Three being what it is. And so, and we're not changing District Three at all. So 75, huh? No, no, we're not, we're not changing District Three under his idea.
At all.
Under his proposal.
Yes.
And so with his proposal, District Five can only lose 40, 400 people. You can't go below 7552 or you're gonna be too small.
I don't think you would lose that.
And so what you're talking, your adjustment you're talking about making is taking 400 people out of five and putting them back into four and then taking 400 people or so out of, uh.
Two, not four.
Out of four and putting them in two.
That puts them at 8100.
Off from a census block perspective, I mean, cause we don't, we can't like pick 400 people. It's gotta be by block.
Yeah.
But, um, we can try that and see, to see what it looks like.
Wouldn't that make too, too, too many?
Well, if, if we grew you by 400.
No, it puts you 8100. Your money.
It puts you at 8100, so you'd be okay.
So what's Raymond gonna do?
Raymond would basically, under this scenario, he might stay the same. He's gonna shrink in Port LaBelle, but grow in Montura and be about the same under this idea.
Mr. Bucin, Mr. Iglesias, what do y'all think?
It's just hard to do with, I mean.
Nobody picked up on that?
We're going back and forth.
I like it.
Okay, you like it?
I'm with it, Carson.
No, I like the idea of squaring it off, for sure.
So we can try that.
What's wrong with the way we got it set up now? What's wrong with it?
Population. Um, I don't like everything anytime, so I'm gonna just tweak it. And I was, and I was really wanting to just make sure you could sleep better tonight knowing that Clueston loses representation in LaBelle just a little bit more. See?
Is there, is there any other concerns about the school board? Do any of you have other concerns or?
I'll take that as a no.
Well, I like District Two. I was fine with that. I mean, it didn't change that much. I know that community, so it wasn't a big impact as far as I could see with that.
Is everybody okay, though, with the tweaking of potentially up to 400 people, but not to exceed and rolling that back in so that District Two just gains more of the Port LaBelle representation and Montura continues to keep, um, Commissioner Iglesias and, and myself and, uh, Mr. Bucin, I mean, Ms. Bucin and, uh, Mr. Basquen in there.
If for some reason Mr. Harris is getting too big, just cut off the portion of the north of, um, Fort No Road and just leave over the portion there. I mean.
Are we not doing that?
It's a joke, Mark.
No, it really wasn't.
Actually, it's not a joke.
I'm serious. No, it's, it's, it makes perfect sense. You just cut the line right there. We're, back in there where Pat lives, what's the name of that?
And we ain't cutting that line.
No, you could have. Let you have it. I know y'all, I know you're close. I'm talking about Fort No Road, just the north side of Fort No Road. If he's too big. No, if he gets too big, I can take that back. Can we slow it down? If he gets too big, we can take that back.
Okay, if he gets too big, but then we got four potentially getting too big, five getting too small. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here.
I withdraw my comment.
So what, we can give part of Port LaBelle to Mitch?
Sure. I'm surprised. Do you want to give me case to Evans Road?
That would make more sense.
Yeah, I knew it would. I'm happy.
I'm happy too.
We do have to hear from the public.
Uh, this is a hearing of the public. If you would like to speak, when you come up, please state your name for the record.
Roly Gonzalez. When I was elected, uh, in Montura, I, um, I stood there from 7:00 in the morning till the polls closed. I had many people complaining that they had to drive into town, the procrastinators, okay? They waited till the last minute or they couldn't make it because they were working. And we might've lost that vote. So I think it's a great idea that we could make that firehouse a voting place for those people out there in Montura. And I think, and I'm sure that having you both in Montura representing and taking the heat and taking it, it'll be great. Having both of you guys in Montura will be great.
What do y'all think about, what do y'all think about, um, if it, if, if we, if it rolls into where the firehouse goes into there with Turning Point, it'd still make it better, right? Turning Point and Flag Hole, it's half the distance to get to Clueston.
Montura's growing on a daily basis. Montura is growing on a daily basis. And, um, and permits are coming. People are coming to get permits on a daily basis. They're growing. They're growing.
House will stay, right?
And the clubhouse, you guys divided as, as seen, but I think both you all in there, great representation. I'm not saying that you're, you all don't represent well. All right? Sorry. But at the end of the day, people were deterred driving at that time. Time had changed as well. At 5:00 in the afternoon, we had mosquitoes out there and people didn't want to come out and vote. And they were deterred. After standing in line for a little while, they would come out frustrated and saying, "Roly, I'm sorry, I can't vote for you because, uh, I have to drive into town." And they didn't have any means or ways of going into town. So I think it's a great idea if we could get that firehouse or anywhere in that district, another polling place for those people out there in Montura. They really do need it. They need as much help as possible on that. Thank you.
Keep in mind, gas is $4 a gallon.
Yeah.
And it's rising. So to drive somebody out of the house, I mean, it'd have to be a heated topic. I mean, it's, I mean, that's be realistic.
Sure.
You know, if it was $1.98 a gallon, they don't care. They're gonna drive, but they're gonna drive, you know, limited distance, knowing that it's gonna cost a lot more to do it, so.
But there's a lot of people out there that they don't even have cars. They need to, they go to their neighbor's house or they depend on their neighbors to take them to a voting place, to the medical place, or to go ahead and get some groceries. Cause you all know there's hardly any groceries in Montura. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
I was just gonna wrap it up if you're ready to wrap it up. So, uh, what I'll do is.
Hey, Mark, that's your time, bud.
That would be sweet to have a buzz on me, right? So, uh, I'll produce a, an effort to do what Commissioner Turner was talking about with the adjustments to Montura and Port LaBelle. And, uh, I'll send out an email with a link, you know, that you can look on your computers and look at it yourself to see what it looks like. And I'll give you the numbers and all that within, as soon as we can do that. And then, um, and then December 7th, 5:30 at your school board meeting room in LaBelle, we can convene again and have the discussion. And then you'll vote later that night, the school board will, later that night.
So, Mark, at this point, do we close and read?
Yeah, you just closed the public hearing, uh, the joint public hearing and adjourned that really because we're gonna reconvene us to any county commission in a few minutes.
Mark, we're, 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 uh, we're not allowed to talk about any other items as it relates to school board, county commission stuff.
Right, not tonight. But, but if you do have some other items of mutual interest that you think you do want to talk about, uh, you can say that tonight and then I'll advertise it as such for December 7th. And then you can have at it on those other topics.
Any school board members?
Actually, if, I would like to talk about the county commission's plans for the courthouse. I know the school district moved out for the renovation. And I would like to see what the county commission is, um, planning to do as you move forward, um, with your architects and see what that building is going to be. I know that we have some different options, um, as far as what we, you know, we are in need of as a school district, our district administration offices. And I would like to, uh, know what all of our options would be going forward.
Well, we're just gonna make sure we give y'all a bill in the next round. Rent's gonna be steep in there, like what the, what the Sears building was for us across the street, so.
Well, you just get your numbers together and, um, I would, you know, just, I want to be able to have that conversation and, uh, you know, see what the, the intention for that, um, that space is gonna be going forward. And if there's.
I, I would welcome that conversation, Ms. Bucin. I would like to know, just, um, I, I know we can't do it in this meeting, but I would like to ask you, Mr. Swindle, if you could encourage in the first quarter of 2022, if we could have a joint meeting with, uh, the Glades County School Board and their Board of County Commissioners and us together. And then I'd like to, I'd also like to challenge all of us to contemplate having a giant powwow with, uh, both the City of LaBelle and City of Clueston and our school boards to just make sure we're all on the same page. Not having Glades County in that one, but having both city municipalities and the county. Do we know we've ever had that type of a meeting? Have we ever?
What would be, do you have a specific discussion you want to have?
Yes, sir. So there's like, like today, I don't know if you heard about the City of LaBelle and their award that they got from the state of Florida. Did you hear about it? Ms. Davis, would you like to tell them? This is huge news for our county. Huge.
But, um, Hendry County got the Forest Main money from DEP from a announcement from the governor. Uh, I think Emily's already sent out the announcement. Um, so everybody can check their email. So $1.8 million to fix the, or finish the Forest Main here in Clueston. City of LaBelle got around $20 million in infrastructure funds for water sewer, um, expansion in the City of LaBelle. And so that's a really big deal and we're excited. And we've all been working together, um, to make that happen, so.
Yeah. So I just think, I just think Superintendent Swindle, it would be awesome if we could get together, we could show a, a bit more unification that we haven't seen. Not that it's not there, but it's a, it's a fortified front that doesn't exist today for the, for the perception, okay? And then we could also bring each other up to speed. You know, I think that whether people want to acknowledge this or not, I think a lot of the conversation that we had with you on this board with working with Glades County on, A, the public safety, um, building and B, the, uh, the, the Glades County Training Facility, that reverberated up to Tallahassee that, you know, and then obviously numbers started to come back. But I think anytime we can get together on a joint, you know, discussion, especially we've never had it, and knowing, you know, what maybe a major need is with plus, what a major need is with the school boards, what a major need is with the city, what a major, uh, city, both cities. And then we can see where that rotates on our legislative asks. I, I think that, that just plays well to all of us, so.
But anyway, the city going from Walmart to the county line. So when, when that goes in, they'll start buying all that land around there. There's thousands of acres for sale.
When that infrastructure goes in, Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, cause they don't want to buy all that land, put in septic tank.
Yes, sir.
So this here's gonna just shoot it up.
And I, and I think, you know, I'm sure you're aware, but the, the conversation we even have with the, the different units in Port LaBelle, I would just like to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. And then knowing where we're going from an infrastructure standpoint, you know?
So for the joint meeting, is the only thing we're adding to the agenda, the historic courthouse discussion? Anything else? Okay, that's all I'll advertise it for then, in addition to redistricting.
Anyone have anything else? Meeting adjourned.